This is the, oh, are you good? Hello, everyone. My name is Catherine Hebert. I'm chairman of the Sustainable Bethel Commission. This is the May 21st meeting and we'll start by a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge of allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, any public comments here?
I have to proceed.
Okay, and there's nobody in the public. Okay, so tonight, we have a guest speaker, Courtney Fox, who is the executive director of KindWorks. And if you haven't been there, it's pretty amazing. It's an organization in Bethel, in the Stony Hill area. And their mission is empowering community through kindness and making a difference through impactful programs and volunteering. So how did this happen? So like a week or so ago, Janice Kuzdanik, and who is the executive director of the Economic Development Department, and Cody reached out and about a project that they are, KindWorks is interested in pursuing and would like to implement. So I suggested that he, they, Cody bring this to the Sustainable Bethel Commission related to applying to the Sustainable Connecticut's Community Match Fund. So, it's all yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, alright, so I bumped the slideshow.
Um, I can do it.
Um, well, thank you for having me here and hope you guys can be okay if you're at home. Um, so I have some notes, but lots of might actually be questions you guys might have. So at any point, please just stop me. It's much more sharing information about our organization. Um, most folks know us as the Benz Bells Project. So if we're talking in town, in Bethel, in Newtown, surrounding areas, we have a ton of murals that folks have seen to say, be kind. It's like a green flower. Uh, the organization Benz Bells was in Bethel for about 10 years and closed the studio this past summer. So do you guys know this story? I want to keep going. Some people, it's just an obligation sharing.
It's being reported, so that's good.
So Benz Bells, amazing organization, great impact in this community area. Um, when they decided to close for financial reasons, they started restructuring a lot of their, um, the way their programs were set up and the way they were doing satellite studios. So we were the only studio in the Northeast, and then there's three studios that were in Arizona. So when they closed us, we had a really unique situation because we didn't have a lot of notice. We had some financial hardship, but we didn't know the plan was to necessarily eliminate studio. We thought maybe there might be some cuts or some adjustments. Um, the really unique thing and the amazing part about this community is that Benz Bells has had two to three staff since I've been there, which is almost eight years. The rest has been a group of volunteers, like ranging anywhere from eight to 15, and these are like essential volunteers, not just people who might stop by once in a while. That group, when we shared the information that we're closing, basically started like these really cool town hall meetings and collectively decided that they were not going to stop the mission of spreading kindness in this area. So because of them, and their, basically their, their will desire to keep doing the mission regardless of what the entity was or the structure, um, we formed the organization called KindWorks. It's all the same thing. A lot of folks that live in Bethel, some in Newtown, a few spread throughout. Uh, but just an amazing group of people. Um, I would employ, I think I'd do a decent job, but compared to what these people are doing, volunteering their time, the effort they put into it, that is the best thing by far about our organization. Because if I'm not here in five years, we'll still be here based on what they're doing. Um, so that's, that's the back story. Benz Bells, a decent amount of people know about. KindWorks from a branding standpoint, not as many people know, but again, it's really the same people. And I'm sure in this room, we're one degree away from knowing folks that have been helping volunteer. So, real quickly, what we do, uh, we have, I call them like the, the four divisions of kindness. The first thing is that we teach. It's not just sort of like a feel-good, it's not just like an artistic thing. We go out and we do workshops with kids, corporations, and we can actually, through science, teach kindness. And at our heart of our mission, that is if it's not sustainable, you cannot teach this. So that is really why we do all these things. The second thing we do is we have this studio, which you're referencing, in Bethel, and it's free to the public. You can engage what we call community art, which I won't spend too much time talking about, but that's this process that's very inclusive. It allows folks to put their hands on clay or to paint objects that ultimately we'll then use for tools of kindness. So like kindness tokens or gigantic projects like Heroes. Third thing is merch. Doesn't sound like much, but the merchandise is all made by volunteers to support our organization. A bunch of kids wearing necklaces that say be kind or have ornaments hanging. There's some intent. Um, but today's project we're talking about is our mural campaign, uh, which, and if you go to the next slide, so I'll probably announce a little bit and like keep you on track with. We have, if a slide later comes up, we've been, we've had the same group together for almost 10 years. We've done, uh, we're coming up on just over 70 murals, uh, in this area. And the group that we're doing outside of one amazing person who's a Bethel resident, uh, Mallory Bruno. You guys might know her, her family a little bit. Outside of her, it is this group of volunteers that have been doing this together for the longest period of time that has this process down pat. And we do murals indoors, outdoors. Um, I gave some examples up there just to kind of give you guys some, some different visuals. And in town, like I'm pretty sure the one you guys have at Bethel Track is, is the be kind green flower. That's our most like used one, but there's a lot of things we can do. So the ones to the left, uh, Boebinger had us do that last year, and they incorporated a lot of language that was specific to their, to their mission, to their, their culture, to their organization. Uh, we just did one to the left that is Heathcote. No reason why, um, I, I'm showing that one is, is we're using colors and shapes we never used to do before. It's Benz Bells Project. So for a group that's involved with art and has some creative expression, there's a lot of like tie-ins, like how we can collectively come up to design. Third one's a tree. We've done almost as many trees as we allow.
Excuse me. Um, we can't see your slide presentation.
Oh, thank you for letting me know. One sec, please.
There's the, yeah, turn there, okay. Share. Oh, yay!
Great, thanks.
Yeah, whoever said that, thank you. It's kind of hard to describe himself visually, so, um. What you guys are looking at now, those murals, it's just a sample. We've done 70, the majority of which are usually flowers or trees, but this is kind of like just, just a different array of things we've done. And one all the way to the far right, uh, if you guys can see that, uh, clean or not, but we did that one in Stratford, uh, at their beach, uh, Shore Beach. Um, but the neat thing about that is like, that's something that's there for their entire community, uh, when they have their beach season. Like, I'm gonna kind of walks by, uh, their, their, um, I, I believe that's their snack shed, or it's, it's something, at least where it's a check-in. It's something that will identify where folks need to come by. And it's a really positive mural, uh, that, that's there that has, you know, messaging. But on top of the fact that we, we hope these things are kind of beautiful, the process, maybe go to the next slide for this. Uh, experience, I think I already covered that. Uh, one more, please. Uh, go one more forward, it'll come back. That's okay. So the, the, the process in which we do this, I, I honestly think is probably the most amazing part. So if you guys wanted to go out and see the murals that we've done, I can send you guys a bunch of locations, you go up. And what you'll, you'll notice is that from a distance, you'll see a pretty clear visual. Um, but as you go closer, you'll notice you can see all these custom tiles. The custom tiles are actually made by the community. So the, the first thing that we do, and this is going from corporations with adults or to going to elementary schools with kids. So this is a pretty easy process. For a teach is we go out and we physically do a tile making workshop. So the majority of the tiles that will be used to actually fill the mural is made by the community. So if you're looking for a project that's inclusive and then get a lot of hands involved towards ultimately a legacy project that will go up on a wall, uh, forever, that's our first step. The second step is, um, it's a painting process. This is even simpler, but from a scale standpoint, there are so many people getting involved. Like, we only have, based on the size of the mural, 250 to 500, uh, tile pieces. Those require three coats of paint. That's a lot of people that get involved. You could have a, a day where the entire town is invited to come and you do a singles, like stroke of paint. But the take-home, at least for today, is that it's very inclusive. A lot of folks can be invited. And then the third part is the physical installation, and that's something that while we have a group of volunteers that oversee it, if no one in the town showed up to do it, we would install. If five people showed up, we'd have them install. If it's 20, we'd have them install. So start to finish, there's opportunities for engagement, but the point for me is like, hopefully folks think these murals are beautiful. Um, there is definitely a powerful message behind why we do it, but the process of the, of the inclusion and, and how we connect to people, I think that's probably the most important part. And I don't know if we can do this, but if you have play, there's a quick time lapse. It's giving a visual, like what it looks like, just the installation, which is only a small part of this. But this might be kind of hard to envision sometimes, unless you see it.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, I can send it later. I can always send it later. It's, it's not something that we have to see. Um. Alright, and, and then the slide before. Sorry, I started bouncing a lot. Uh, the idea of why to install a mural, from a standpoint of like beautifying an area, I, I don't think this, I, I have to, like, sell that. I think if folks believe in art or they think it can enhance an area, um, like, I think that speaks for itself. Hopefully I'm doing a good job explaining the inclusion. You're not hiring a team of, you know, paid artists. Majority of the folks that'll be involved are volunteers. The other folks are engaged in the process of teaching education. So it's, it's a lot of mission stuff, but to get that be people to be part of a project that is putting something up there. And we know that science says that if you have a positive message that folks see over and over that can reinforce behavior, including words like be kind, I think can be pretty impactful. And we absolutely, especially the schools, these murals become backdrops for like, like photo shoots when people are doing like prom and like when they're doing like announcements. I can't see something that not possibly happening here. So I want to suggest that like, I can give you some metrics on like the foot traffic or like what trends that would be for like downtown, but if we believe in art and beautifying an area and we believe in bringing the community together to do something, I'd like to think we can at least sort of offer that. Um, that's why to install. And then, um, there's just a few slides. So like the next one, I think after this is tile making. It's just a picture. If you guys can just take a second and again, maybe I try to share that video later. But again, we, we do this with kids through adults. Like, we were at Danbury Hospital a few years ago. So like, anyone could do this process. What we're good at is sort of teaching. So that, that's the first part. Um, the second part is painting. I don't have any pictures for that. It's kind of straightforward. Yeah.
For, uh, you're saying that it's inclusive in the process. Is it, are there modifications for like differently-abled people? Or is it sort of?
I don't know of a situation we've had that we've not found a way to include someone. But if we cannot, we'll absolutely figure it out, or we'll ask Kelt to figure it out. Because if not, it defeats our entire mission. Everyone has to involve some capacity.
Okay.
Um. So there's a picture of tile making, just for a visual. And then after that, next slide is the installation. It's just so hard to picture this, like, unless you're there. But the last step, it's two full working days of taking what'll be a table full of tiles and carrying them to a wall. And we, we do some of the, the layout. Sorry, it's my son. Uh, we do, um, the, the layout and like some of like, some of the tiles that we'll make will be like, uh, the boundaries or the letters. But then after that, let's just say you guys are the first wave, you guys for 20, 30 minutes are literally putting up these tiles and kind of go wherever you feel they should go. And then after we do that, the next day is the grouting, and that's just, we make a custom grout. It's just like grouting your, your, your your kitchen base or your shower, right? It's, it's not a very hard scientific thing. It's a bit messy and there's a process to it. But once that's done, you've just put something to the wall. It's going to basically be there forever. And I'm not sure if I've slid after that. Uh, a location. Um, this, this process is new for us. Normally, schools or companies like hire us to do this. This is kind of unique to see. Can we do something where we get the town to work together to possibly fundraise to, to build this? But we want to do whatever's going to work best for the community, the best representative. It seems like this building could be amazing. And so from what we've heard, for a lot of reasons, we, we'd like to propose that, but we're also open to what works best for the town. It's not like we're coming in with, you know, it's a certain way it has to be done. It's, it's, it's whatever you guys all think would be the best place. And then as far as the budget, a lot of stuff is based on, uh, the scale of the project. We do some that are six by six. We've done some that are 10 by 10. We have some ideas to do when it's a little bit more like horizontal here. But we know that there is a cap to that. We know no matter what, we will not exceed that. So whatever we do, we'll work with understanding, uh, that. And we'll just be transparent and share as much information we can.
I have another question.
Yes.
Um, for finding the location process, is that part of? Is that part of your process? Like, do you have surveys or a tool that you use to narrow down options of locations when you're working with a particular community? If you, if you're, if they're not saying like, this spot, please, you know?
Yeah, it's, um, so the things that we need is we need a, a brick or concrete wall. Um, or if it's inside, we need relatively, uh, you know, sheet rock that's, that's in good condition. That's the only criteria as far as like what we physically need to adhere this to. As far as like locations, we normally go to a school and we'll offer opinion based on like this building. But for a town, that's kind of unique. And I would not be speaking like honestly if I said that this is something that we normally do. So I think our process will be asking a lot of questions and getting feedback. It's not like some research data. We're bandwidth-wise, we're super small to stuff. We're good at executing what we do, but if there's a certain criteria that we might have to work a little harder to get there. But we don't, like, normally send that stuff out.
Okay.
Good question. It's something, if it's, if we'll be more effective at choosing the right location, if we're willing to go through any process that we can.
I'm, I'm thinking about sort of how Sustainable Commission has has always made an effort to be inclusive of the town residents and their feedback and thought process on anything we, we've done. So to make the whole process get even more inclusive to your, to your mission, uh, I was wondering if there were existing tools, but it just seems that the process is feedback from the community, from, from the group you're working with.
Yeah, we, we have a nice humble honesty about us. Like, we can speak to what we know and we don't know. So if there's third ways to do things in town to make sure their survey's done, we don't currently do them, but this is a partnership where we're not trying to just like
Yeah, just as an example.
It sounds like this is interesting. We would follow whatever. If you guys might have things existing, you know, we follow that for more feedback.
Okay, thanks.
But does the process make sense? Am I doing a good job with explaining that? It's sounding like a lot of people
Yeah, so, and again, let me just explain also for the record, we are a little cog in the process, right? The ultimate approval will be the Sustainable Connecticut through the Community Match Fund, um, pro application. But I want to say a couple of things before the commission considers the application. And thank you very much for coming and thank you, um, for the presentation. This work is very important. I break things down because I want to make sure I say it correctly and not go, uh, 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 you know? This work is very important to the chaotic, polarized world that we live in. KindWorks bridges the gap using kindness as a way to collaborate and connect our differences. I'm so glad that you're here in Bethel. Their work goes beyond Bethel. It's regional and it's actually global. So I did mention to Cody, I do have a colleague of mine who, um, sorry, I can't move my neck that well, uh, who lives in the UK, who has actually created a whole business around the economics, because there's a piece to that also, besides the, the culture of, um, KindWorks and what that means to a community or people. Uh, but there's an economics of kindness and the financial value and benefit to businesses in adopting a culture of kindness. And she has data that actually shows that this and presents this around the world in different ways. She just had a, a forum at the, um, London School of Economics in April. So the strategy not only benefits, like I said, the community at large from teachings and learnings, but there is a financial benefit. And I will connect you with Natalie very soon. So the agenda item, um, before you, and then we can get into a little more discussion from other commissioners, because I'd like to hear from everybody, is to consider, uh, consideration of KindWorks to apply for the Sustainable Connecticut Community Match Fund grant. So do I hear a motion? Should we complete the presentation? Oh, are you done with the presentation or? Yeah, you are done. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, but there's more discussion, so we're going to include it. We just want, I just want to make sure we get that on the record. Do I hear a motion to consider? And second?
Second?
Okay. So is there any other comments? Do you want to say something, Peter?
No, no comments. Good idea, given the horrible worlds we live in. And, um, yeah.
I have a question. Um, just can kindly just be patient for one second? One second. Do you have a comment? No, you're good. Um, Krista?
Um, first, can you, there, very good. Thank you. Um. So I, I was wanting to go about cost, you know, the, the, it's, you said it was based on size. So let's say that tree mural that we saw, is that a $15,000 mural?
No, the tree, I think, I'm just giving you like, like a standard number. I, I think that's somewhere around maybe 5,500.
Okay.
We're doing things with schools. Like, we have some like templated prices that if you go on our website, I'm sure they'll also have those. What we're trying to explore is potentially something very unique to the town that might have more square footage, that would change the formula. Uh, and then also possibly incorporating things like, like a kindness day and what the marketing might require. Um, but just what you see on our website will be just our base cost, just for like three or four different, like, standard murals we make.
So Krista, let me just clarify something. So this is to apply for the Sustainable Connecticut's Community Match Fund. There is a ceiling of $15,000. What that means is that the Sustainable Connecticut will match up to $15,000, meaning that KindWorks will have to raise $7,500 and Sustainable Connecticut will match that $7,500 to make it $15,000. I just want to make it clear.
Right. Yeah. So I was just, you know, wondering what portion needs to be raised. So that was why I questioned the price.
If it's $15,000, then it's 7,500.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, Sunny, do you have anything?
No, this is good. Actually, I had visited KindWorks at their inauguration and, and I reflect what Peter said. I think it's a great idea in this fragmented world, I believe. No further comments. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Tia?
Um, I, just one quick question. So, and perhaps I, I just wasn't following along as, as closely as I might have. Um, so we need to approve this for them to be able to go forward, but it doesn't imply any, anything else from us. In other words, we're not, okay. So, so it has nothing to do with what the content is, who they choose, where, where it's going to be, nothing of that sort. It's just, we're saying, we, we think it's a good idea and you should go forward and, uh, apply for this.
So, so yeah, so the short answer is yes. It's going to be similar to what Bethel Arts did with their sculpture installation. Um, they will, they will meet with Sustainable Connecticut. They're going to have to, um, meet, comply with those, those requirements. With, if, if the end goal is to put this on, for instance, town hall somewhere, like say in the back, they would need to go to the Board of Selectment and to get permission to do that.
Okay. I, I just wanted to be clear that we, we were not, other than endorsing the idea of the project, any of the content-related specifics are not within our purview.
No, it's not, really. But the, the Sustainable Connecticut will look to us for input, but no. Um, it'll be similar, like I said, it'll be similar to the Bethel Arts where they'll, they'll make, uh, once if they start the process, they will come back to us to give updates like Bethel Arts did.
Right. I, I just wanted to be clear because there was some, um, discussion that I heard or some comments I heard from people about, well, Sustainable Bethel chose the sculptures. And I said, no, they didn't. We, we supported, we supported the project, but we did, we did not have anything to do with the actual, uh, sculptures themselves choosing that, that kind of thing. That was not the Sustainable Bethel Board's, uh, decision.
Correct. Okay. Gabriella, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead. Um, oh, I'm sorry. Do you have something else? Oh, oh, wait. Krista, I want to give Dana a chance.
Okay. Two things. One, do we have, or you have a plan for raising the $7,500? Like, is there anything in the works for that?
Uh, conceptually, I, I can't give you like the full blueprint, but you've done it before. A lot of the stuff is very similar for us. There's just a slight uniqueness that normally, uh, folks reach out to us and they sort of do the fundraising. So there's a lot of commonality and I, I think there's a lot of folks in this area that recognize what we do in some schools and families. So, uh, we, we believe we have the right network and we think we have some creative ideas that will work. And we're definitely not afraid of the attempts of like what that would look like, and we should try. So, yes.
Did we have to approve for Bethel Arts?
We can, we, we get, it was a consideration, um, to, um, apply for the grant. So, okay. Gabriella? Yes. So, so I'm clear in my understanding. You, in order to apply for the Community Match Fund, uh, part of meeting the criteria is a specific, having a specific project that you want funding with the funds, right? So this would be for a collaboration with the town in some way. Okay. So that's what you're crowdsourcing. Okay.
Great.
I, I was, I was confused, but what Tia said, um, made me think that we needed to have like a specific project, but that's the process. You're figuring it out.
Yeah, so if you, I'm not necessarily saying this is the mural we want for Bethel. I'm demonstrating, we've done over 70, most of which are on schools all throughout the surrounding area. There's a bunch of like templated ones. We've done a lot of, uh, but there might be something really unique that might be even better for Bethel. Like possibly incorporating the letters of Bethel as people drive by and like, I didn't mention this, but we use mirror a lot. And so mirrors is really kind of like neat, like reflective quality. It's almost like whatever it is we experience, if you drive by a stream, the sun catches just right. It, it's that kind of thing. So I feel like it'd be selling the process short. Some of the people that really want to do this for the town, uh, if we just said, this is what we're doing because we think there might be a few ideas that possibly go through. Whoever that process is, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but hopefully get a feel for us. We're pretty transparent and what works best for everyone. If that's confusing, we have so many that we put up on schools that people will be a positive message for the community, like no matter what, um.
Yeah, I think I was
Flexibility, but
Right. I think I was just confused as to, is it a specific thing that you are bringing or a, a thing that you are developing, but it's
Yeah, it, it is a process we have down pat. We're good at connecting community, science backs why kindness. We know the message will be important. The actual mural hopefully is a cool thing to kind of figure out together.
Yeah.
And if it gets complicated or it's confusing, well, we got a few online and folks can just kind of vote and make your decision. And maybe that's a better way to engage the town, you know, to what that is.
Great, thank you.
Well, good questions. This is like, we're a really good organization, but it's complicated. When you go for like, you do educational work and then you do community art, it's a blur, but it's effective. I'm just sorry to explain.
We'll, we'll try to dumb it down. Excuse me. So to get this thing advanced, but anyway, we'll help you do that. Right. I, I think it's, it's a matter of being clear so that the intent of the project is transparent and, you know, Sustainable Connecticut can approve it.
Yeah.
Uh, because it is
And if it's helpful, uh, you know, we, we have a website. There's a lot of the information there. So as, as a follow-up, if I'm on the job shooting game for every reason, like there, there's enough stuff there. It's like, oh, that's what it was, or that's the picture. So, um, if something is missing, if not for me, just on the website as well.
Chris, Chris had another, Krista, you have another question?
Yeah, um, some of it has been answered by what Tia and Gabriella have said, but the application, like, how detailed is that? Or is it a broad, you know, I don't have any experience.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that. It, it's very simple. It is not like a tedious, very detailed grant application that you would typically apply to the, from the state or to the federal government. It's just, um, meeting, I, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I think there's six categories of criteria, which to me, I mean, I'm just giving my opinion that this organization meets. Um, if you need further information as to what that is, you could go onto the Sustainable Connecticut website, look under funding and community management, and it'll show you those, those categories. They're very broad. Um, they don't require a full-blown application. It's meeting with them and they are, um, the, whoever they assign as the representative to this project, they are literally on top of the organization, like daily, to, because they really want these to happen around the state.
So, so it's sort of dynamic in that you apply and then it develops over time, over conversation?
Yes.
Okay.
Chris, yes. And, you know, we could talk offline. Why don't you take a, take a look at, um, the website, you know, if you need further clarification as to the process.
Okay.
Okay. Is, and is there any other? Okay. Is, and is there any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion on the table. We have a second. All in favor to consider, um, Kind Works to apply for the Community Management with the Sustainable Connecticut, are we saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No. You are. Good. So we'll, we'll talk, you know, because I won't have to connect you with, um, Sustainable Connecticut, right?
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for your time. Hopefully it made some sense. If this doesn't happen, it's an awesome process and we all do it together, but.
Thank you so much.
Wherever. Um, I hope we find a spot. Anyway, thank you for including me. Appreciate it.
So if you want to send the deck to me, I can send it around to the commissioners. Oh, you have it. That's right. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Have you ever done it on a horizontal surface or do you only do like vertical surfaces?
No. Uh, it's, it's me, do they?
Like a walkway?
No, no, on the walkway. Oh, on the ground? We do stepping stones. It's interesting to walk away right to you.
Exactly. I'm, I'm just looking at that picture every time I go over there. I'm like, where would I have?
Turn around. So, you know. So the answer is no. I'm trying to find the best way to explain why. And I think it's because I don't know how some of the custom tiles we make, some of the mirror, like they're where.
Yeah, that's right.
It's really interesting. Like, you know, this person I've been asked that all our stuff is up on the walls. Stepping stones you make kind of provide that, but I don't know. Maybe that's a collaborative thing somehow to have a walkway that brings you to the mural.
Might be interesting to like do it and epoxy over it or something.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I'm sure it can be done. But we were fortunate enough, someone taught us this process, this mural art in Philadelphia. We learned that and we've been doing it for years now. Uh, but maybe there's something.
Well, please, I did a rainbow crosswalk in, in, in Norwalk at a very, very extremely busy intersection with throw-in plastic. And it's still there and that's five years ago. So, you know.
It's already signed.
Something to think about.
Thank you guys all. I appreciate it.
Very soon. Okay, this is great. All right. So Chairman's report, let's try to make this quick. Um, I wanted to bring up the discussion about a town charter. Um, and again, I'm going to read this so I don't forget anything. So one of the key upcoming priorities is to ensure that Sustainable Bethel Commission becomes a permanent commission within the Town of Bethel Charter. This will formally recognize the commission's value and secure its role in shaping Bethel's future. Since its formation in twenty-twenty-two as an ad hoc volunteer advisory commission, the commission has had the flexibility to build a strong foundation. So it's similar to when you start something, you have a blank slate, you do need flexibility to build. Um, we've developed goals and some implemented community-focused project actions, not only for Bethel, but quite frankly, for the broader region. And this will, elevating the Sustainable Bethel Commission to the charter will solidify its legitimacy and long-term presence, ensure continuity to support the Town of Bethel, and expand the capacity for action through formalized structure. In the proposed structure, commissioners will continue to be appointed by the first selectman, approved by the board of selectmen, and sworn in by the town clerk. We serve all residents of Bethel, regardless of personal philosophy. Our charges results-driven and action-oriented projects focused on the betterment of our community and supporting the Town of Bethel collectively, together. We recognize that government takes, pro- process takes time, and I say this all the time, we move at a glacial pace. Um, but we have used our time wisely. Over the past three years, we have raised visibility, strengthened partnerships, and demonstrated consistent value. So now we are at a tipping point. And this has always been the plan. The next phase, the commission's evolution requires a more formalized governance process, including full commission votes on key matters enhanced by accountability and deeper integration into municipal operations. So this transition will position the commission to having lasting impact and to continue driving forward-looking sustainable solutions for the Town of Bethel. So there's more stuff. So I wanted to talk about the charter because that, we've had, they've had several public hearings and I went to one a few weeks ago and there was substantial support to our position. Um, and it is advancing, um, my understanding is that it will be on the ballot, I believe, maybe in November, right? That's their hoping. They're hoping for November. Yeah, that'd be great. So that's where the process is at this point. Um, let's see, what else did I want to just quickly run through? Court. Um, the Main Street Accelerator Project is coming to an end in June. There will, there will be a presentation of the four Connecticut communities that were selected to be part of this and hopefully Bethel, I think we have the best project, but okay, will receive five thousand dollars to, um, for that initiative. Someone else? We, let's see. Oh, um, essential information about the Repair Cafe and we posted that on social media and other places. Um, the HRA's Repair Cafe, which is in September and near the mall at the Veterans, um, space, um, they're looking for fixers. So that works.
Care for them.
Yeah.
Want to fix bikes?
Oh, awesome. Did you send it out to the email contacts? Always. Um, okay. So that's all I have on my reports. Any comments?
Uh, I have a comment. Uh, on the commission being, uh, permanent, um, oh, here, hang on a second. Let me put my camera on. Um, on the commission being permanent, um, I think it's important, if this is going to vote, for us to have, I hate to say the word campaign, but it, for us to let people know what the commission does. Because I was just at the Historical Society Board Meeting and we were talking about the two-hundred-and-fiftieth and the question was, what does the Sustainable Bethel Committee, uh, Commission do? Like, they did not know. So I think if, if people are going to vote on this, it's important for them to know what we're doing.
So I have created a handout flyer that we used for Earth Day that explains, I showed it to you not too long ago.
Yes.
Explains like how we came to be, what, what we do and all of that. Um, so I think it's something that we can definitely share and spread the word with.
Yes.
So people have a better understanding of the fact that we are part of town government as an ad hoc and it's what we are focused on.
Yeah. I, I, I think too that we also maybe need a couple of like success stories, you know, like here, we were involved in this and this is what happened, or we suggested this and worked with so-and-so for this to happen. And, you know, because people love a story.
I, I think those are really good points and I agree with you on the success story for sure. I use that in my business all the time and use that in my career all the time. So I agree with you and that's something that needs to happen. The charter, yes. And again, we had very good support for this commission as it moves forward and, um, yes, so I agree with you.
Is there still issue with the handout or is it something that we're all comfortable using moving forward?
I think if we're representing the town, it has to be approved by the first selectman.
Well, and, and have we all seen it? Do we have copies of it?
Uh, it was at, it was at Earth Day.
Right.
I, I, I know that. Do we have, do we have electronic copies of it?
I can, I can share it with you guys.
Yeah. I mean, I just think that's a courtesy. We should all see it and, and see if we, uh, if that's what we want and, and add in any edits to it. Um, because I want to be very careful about, I, I, I personally am very careful about any communication of that sort because it can be challenging.
What would be the concern?
I don't know. I haven't seen it. I didn't read it at the Earth Day. I was busy working the event, so I didn't, I didn't take it. I don't know what it looks like. So I don't know if there's a concern.
I have paper handouts. I know that it's not going to, you're not going to see it online, but I guess it's.
I think it's really just making sure that the language matches what the town is comfortable.
Exactly, exactly.
Right. I mean, in my opinion, it's, it aligns with all of the Sustainable Bethel Commission.
Then send it out.
Documentations.
Send it out.
Yeah, I, okay.
No, no discussion. Send it out. We'll get back to you and that's it.
There you go.
Yeah. Well, that's sweet. Really funny. Very funny. Ha, 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 ha.
Put your glasses on, Tia.
Yeah, no, not to worry. They're on. Not to worry. Um, send it out to us electronically and we'll get back about it because I, I, I want to be very careful about this.
Yeah. I, I, I read it briefly, um, at the last meeting that, um, Dana and Gabriella and I had, and it, it seems like it very much aligns with what.
Send it out.
Yeah, with what the bylaws and that kind of thing.
We'll get back about it. Done. What's, what's the issue? Nothing. Thank you.
There's no issue, Tia.
Send it.
Okay. Can I have a couple of minutes? Okay. Anything else on this?
So I had a question, Catherine. So is this something that will, uh, mean that, you know, there are commissioners? I believe for some of the other commissions, they are elected, but the residents, is that where this is headed?
I, I can't, I didn't understand what you said. Can you speak a little louder? I'm sorry.
Yeah, for, I, I don't know if this makes a difference. Um, for some of the commissions, I believe the, uh, commissioners are elected. They're on the ballot. Right? So is that where this is headed by making it a permanent commission?
No.
No. No?
I think you're referring to like building commissioners and stuff like that.
Didn't Catherine say that part of the charter said that it's appointed? Catherine, didn't you say it was appointed?
Yes, I did. Yes, this will continue to.
No, it's not. It's not an elected, it's not an elected board. It's an appointed board, like the library board is an appointed board.
Okay.
Um, right now, we're appointed. So, you know, anyone can ask to be appointed to the commission or the selectmen group will go back to their groups and try and get people to fill in specific slots because I'm sure it also has a proportional, um, membership aspect to it as well.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, no, great question. Great question because I would not want to be running for election. I don't have time for that.
Understood. Yeah. Thanks. Thanks, everybody for clarifying. I was just curious. Yeah.
I shared it, Tia, to the email.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So the next is consideration of approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next agenda item is, um, the.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Okay, so let's, should we retake it? Okay. Consideration of approval to, uh, uh, of the minutes. Motion?
So.
Second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the next is, um, a discussion item we had last month, consideration of.
Sorry, so you need to.
Oh, app, oh. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Yay. See, I need to be, you need to stick up those so I can follow your, you know?
That's the first time we've actually said that.
Yeah. That you said that or anybody?
Usually just quiet.
Heard it a couple times. We think, we need to get in the habit of that. That's a big thing.
We're going to be a whole commission.
That's it. Right. No, that's the whole point, right? All right. So the next item is, um, what we spoke about last month to change the meeting time from seven PM to six PM. Consideration of approval to amend the annual Sustainable Bethel Commission meeting schedule to change the time of the monthly meetings to start at six PM. Do I hear a motion?
I presented it, so I.
So moved.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you can make the motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. Discussion. Anybody have comments about that?
Too close to the end of workday.
Anybody else have a discussion about that?
Will that prevent you from attending?
Something more often than not, I would suspect. And I guess my question would be, what is the standard time in town for all the commission meetings? I think it's seven.
Well, the library board meets at six. And we changed it from seven to accommodate a number of our members who, um, asked for it to be earlier. So we changed that, oh gosh, maybe ten years ago or so. Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay. So, all in favor? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passed. We will change the time to six PM.
Okay. I, I know we already voted on this one. Will that prevent us from having a quorum? If.
Sounds like.
It might. But you just approved it.
Yeah, but seven o'clock could, could do it too, Krista. That's the problem. It's, there's no one good time. Somebody's got an issue. It's not, and it may not always be an issue.
Yeah.
Six-thirty. Does that make?
Wait, then we'll have to retract.
Yeah, I know. I mean. Well, like, can, can we, like, let's try it and see how it goes. And if it's not, if it's not working, then then we will need to address it again.
Yeah, that's a good point, Krista, because that's what happened to us at the library. It was always seven o'clock. And then we changed it to six and people were concerned that same issue, that we may not have a quorum. And every so often you have somebody who winds up, you know, I'm going to be fifteen minutes late or something, but, but, but generally we don't. I, I think in the last sense, we've changed it. We've only had quorum issues maybe once or twice. Most of that was due to weather more than anything else. So, um, and before we could do things virtually. Because the virtual really does help out.
It does.
Especially for those of us who travel a lot or or get involved with a lot of other things. And it's like, you really don't want me on the road. I'm a little tired right now. It's been a long day, lots of meetings. But anyway, so, yeah. Okay. But, 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 and that was something we had always held open, which was if the six o'clock time didn't work for us, we could always change it again. But six o'clock has held for us and at one time, people wanted to try five. That was really bad. No. The six seemed to work well enough.
Because Bethel has traffic now at five o'clock.
Yes, it does. So, okay, that was eighty-four.
Hey, this is the most discussion on a, on a time change I've ever seen, but great. Yay. So six o'clock is for now. We'll see how it goes. If we're lacking quorum, we'll have to think about that.
Sure thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Report, some, okay, so we'll see you next month here in person, right, Sunny?
Yes.
This was your thing. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Um, Commissioner Reports. All right. So on the two-fifty celebration, um, the first selectman sent, um, an email to a, a, a group of people, which includes Historic Commission, the, um, on the list. I can put this here. Oh. Patriotic Association, American Legion, the Library Board and the Board of Ed. Um, we will be meeting in the next week or so and then we'll go, we'll see what the, um, leadership and of course Sustainable Bethel. We'll see what the leadership says of each of those, um, um, organizations and then we'll start organizing something for next year. But that's all I have right now is, is there's a meeting with the first selectman.
Is anybody expected to?
Is anybody expected to go for? I'm expected to go.
I, I haven't, I haven't seen anything.
No, no, you won't.
Only went to commissioners?
Yeah, someone went to um the. The head of commission, yeah. The commissions, yeah, of the groups.
How does it get, how, I mean, you know, cuz I'm.
Initial meeting, and then it'll get communicated out to all the um members of each of those organizations.
Okay, because the historical society, I know they have not seen anything yet.
No, cuz it just probably, it just, it literally just went out.
Okay.
So, they will have that.
Okay.
So that's all I have right now, but I will absolutely keep everyone posted, I know Gabriella and Chris, so you're very interested in participating. In that process, and you will, um but that's all I have today, as far as information. Oh, Tia, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 that's okay, um Gabriella, I, I tried to open the uh attachment and um it won't open. I just keep getting the, um I get a PDF of the agenda and a Carvela, Cavilla or something. And it says it's a JPG and my system won't open it, I tried it both on my laptop and my uh, and my tablet. If, if, maybe somebody can take a picture with their phone, that might work too, unless you can make it a PDF.
Okay, alright, so maybe, you know, later on, we can send it. Alright, I just screenshots, I'll send it to you. Okay, so that's all I have about the two fifty, you will be included, and you will be informed, but again, that's all I have is. Any other questions about that? No? Um, the Pride Festival is Saturday, May thirty-first, um I think Gabriella, you got the permit with them, or you got a table with them? That's what Nora told me, um so if there's anybody that is interested or can and available to participate that day. That would be great.
What time is the date?
I think it starts at, um the setup is at nine and it goes till five, and then the, there's a parade at um noon.
Okay.
So is, is it such an all-day event?
I can help out in the morning if that. Works, yeah, sometime in the morning, in the afternoon, I have to do an airport run, so that won't be possible. Who will be there, Gabriella?
So, do we want to do this? Again, the discussion I had with Catherine around the handout. Was around diversity, equity, and inclusion, so there's issue. With upholding those concepts, I don't think it's genuine to participate in Pride. To, for what, right? So I, that's why I wanted the handout to be talked about, so that. If we are going to participate at Pride, we do so. Transparently, um and with good faith, so, yeah, um. Who exactly is going to be there? I don't know, when I registered a long time ago, it was like, we did it last year, let's do it again. But if, if people aren't available or. Interested in some way, then. Like, I don't, I'm not going to volunteer my time to be the only one there, I'll bet.
I mean, aside from coming out as a, a town commission, I don't know that this necessarily falls under Sustainable Bethel.
But it's a big part of everything that Sustainable Bethel Commission has done, it is certainly.
That the commission's spoken about, but.
It's a huge part of what the Sustainable Connecticut Equity Toolkit, which is the only required aspect. Of the whole. Process, it's part of their whole mission and purpose, so for this commission to be have, to be created. To attain that certification.
Right, but this commission in one form existed for years. I was a part of it, we've been, this was the old, I forget what we called it.
That was energy and.
Right, the energy.
Something else has been created.
The Energy Commission. We had projects with actual things being put up and built. What I've seen here is we do a lot of talking and participating in events. And we're not actually, we're not actually doing anything sustainable. We are, but.
Walk on it, we didn't walk on it.
Well, sustainable, sustainable is not.
First year of discussions, what does sustainable mean? And if you look at the dictionary definition, it's a little different than the pursuit of Connecticut. Um, as a whole.
I, in order for things to be sustainable, long-term sustainable practices, they have to be. Inclusive and diverse, and it has to address the inequities that have existed, because that's how.
Yes. Or supporting a parade announces your support for diverse people.
Right.
But it's not really a sustainable effort. Um, where the solar cluster that we put up actually does things a, and has a purpose. Um, transportation, um, uh pollinator pathways, this is more. Sorry to say, a feeling, um that we should support because we're looking towards sustainability. But I can take into any city, town, or municipality Sustainable Commission, cuz I meet with. A lot of them, and there's no discussion about anything. Let's say if we're talking about transportation, rides for all, everybody needs to be able to get on a bus, everybody. Has the right to get into a taxi, all of these things are equity-based. But they're actual things, a parade, I don't see what it does to. Push the, the agenda of Sustainable Bethel, except get us into a political mess.
I think. Let other people talk, please, rude.
I, I think this goes back to something that was, that I said earlier, is. People don't necessarily know what the Sustainable Commission. Does, and, and what our mission is, all of the energy, the transportation, the this, that. And so, the opportunity at Pride Day, which is not just a parade, it's like a whole. Like sort of festival thing, so to have a table there to. Let people know what it is that we do, I think is important.
That's what we're talking about, we're not talking about anything else.
No, no, I agree, as a town commission, all commissions should represent at any sanctioned town event. Um, I just see every conversation we have, whether it's the public or internally. It's all about DEI. And yes, they are very important, and yes, everything I've done in life. Has always taken into account people that don't have the ability to do what I do, or. Walk, talk, or breathe even, um it, it just seems, we're just focusing. A lot on things, to your point, how do we explain what we do? I can't explain what we do. Sunny and I can explain what we did, we put up a solar cluster, we did audits of every building, we know, we. Computerized and automated all of the energy in town, but here we talk. That's just the difference between commissions, we're, we're here to talk about ideas and concepts, not actual things. So the be kind thing was great, it's a physical thing, everybody can appreciate it. Understand it's for everyone, maybe not for unfortunately blind people. But maybe there's textures that, that they can appreciate, but we're just spinning our wheels.
So can I get back to the Pride Festival, cuz I think it's really important, we have a table there for a few years now. I will be there, Sunny will be there, and if anybody else would like to join, that would be great, and I think it's important that we have presence. At the Pride Festival here at Town Hall.
I think Tia has her hand up.
Oh, Tia?
Yeah, the one thing I do wanna say is that, as you were saying. You know, it is about ideas and concepts, and there will be some projects that we do get involved with, but it's a lot of trying to um. Urge things forward, and I think we need to be very, very careful about seemingly to be. Political, because we are not a political organization or commission, we're really. We're, we're here to make the town more sustainable, a better place to live, all of those sorts of things. And need to be very careful about our profile and being perceived as. Pushing any sort of political agenda, whether it's with a big P or with a little p, and I do understand, as soon as you get two people together. Things are political, I, I, I get that, I get that, but I, but I think we do need to be careful as a commission. Sort of back to what you were saying, is, i- i- is about, you know. About how we talk about ourselves and how we talk about what we do, we need to be very careful about that. And I, I don't have any problem with being at a um, an event, I won't be here, so I can't participate, but um. But, but I just think we need to be very careful about that, so that we can continue to do good work. And do work for all peoples of every age and every stage of their lives and every condition of their lives. I think that's the thing that's really important, and that's really the essence, I think, of, of, of who we are as sustainable.
I think it's disingenuous to say that it's not a political entity, we're part of a municipal government, we're registered voters in order to serve on. The commission, it's political in nature because of funding and the way funding works in the town and in the state, so like. It's part of the makeup of all of the commissions.
Right, but that goes to the point that we brought up earlier, putting something out claiming that it's from the town of Bethel. Yeah, is, is problematic if we look at this as being political, cuz you've just put out this document. And handed it out that we haven't voted on, and I don't.
I was asked to make it by Catherine.
I did, I did ask you to make it, yes.
And anything I've made for the commission before has never been voted on or approved, any sort of.
Right, but as, as far as that handout, where we are preferring to represent the town of Bethel to the public, we. To Tia's point, we've got to be careful about what we say, because we're really not involved in housing solutions, and.
Kelly's doing the homeless thing.
What are we doing with the homeless?
I'm not exactly sure.
We had conversations with Megan and some of the healthcare um department heads here about our support, our support. To their, their, the work that, that they do with homelessness for the elderly. So that it was.
I mean, I think the, the key thing is that we're supportive, we need to be careful about seeing. Of being an advocate for a particular perspective, and that's, and that's the thing that I, that I worry about. And, and, you know, a lot of. You know, government and politics are two very different things, and um we are part of the government. We are not political in a sense of being endorsing one set of. Ideas or concepts as opposed to a different one, we're inclusive, and that's, and that's a very different thing.
Is it stating that we're inclusive?
Yeah, isn't that the definition of.
We need to be very careful about if we do indeed, and again, I haven't seen this, I haven't read it, um but if we are using. Excuse me for a second, if we are using the terminology of DEI. That is a politically charged statement at the moment, and that is a concern, because, because. If you're inclusive, that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, you're taking a side in that whole issue. And we need to be careful about, about. Dist- dist- making the, the distinction between being inclusive. And, and having a political stance on DEI, that's, i- if, if it does indeed do that, and again, I haven't read it, I don't know what it says. But, but we need to be very careful about that, especially at a point where, you know, the charter is gonna go up for a vote. And if we're seen as promulgating a particular viewpoint and advocacy. I, I, I think that can, that could be an issue for us.
If I may add, I know there's been a lot of conversation on it, on this, um. I believe a part of the Sustainability Charter was equity. And um Peter, I agree with you, we had done some things that were a lot more tangible, but I think we are at a point. Where sustainability as a concept, I mean, not just in our town, but everywhere, is coming up. To address not only tangible but intangibles, and part of it is keeping. The community glued together, um and so I, a- again, this is.
Yeah, the intangibles.
If I may, I may, Peter, yeah, so. Whether we are like doing or not doing something because of a political reason, I don't think should be the way we operate. It should be like regardless of uh how the political environment changes. If we have been carrying out a certain agenda, we shouldn't be changing based on the political um. You know, flavor of the day, almost, uh and that, that's, you know, a point of view, and again, and very objectively. There is a community event happening, and if we are at the table to talk about Sustainable Bethel as. Uh, a commission and what we do, uh we just look at it as an opportunity to meet. A certain section of society, you know, whether or not we agree or disagree. Um, with, you know, what is going on, again, a very neutral stance, we show up. We talk about Azels, and that's what we are there for, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we are taking sides one way or the other. Tomorrow, if there's another uh group, which is large enough where we can be present, we should. Take that opportunity as well, that, that's at least my, my point of view.
Thank you, Sunny, um like I said, when I presented my um comments regarding the charter. This commission represents the entire town of Bethel, and I wanna make sure that everybody understands that, so.
Right, and, and again, back to the point of that's what, and I agree with you, Sunny, that, you know, that's what inclusion is all about, it's, it's everyone. You know, um whatever they bring, it's just, we need, well, we just need to be careful, sorry, a cat just caught a mouse. Kind of freaked me out, um but, but, you know, so, and I, and once again, I think. These kinds of things are what's happening in town, we should, we should be there, and to Krista's point, the more we can let people know the kinds of things that we're involved with. The better it is, because then people will feel comfortable coming forward to us and saying, hey, we have a thought about blah, 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 whatever it is. And, and we can look at it and, and, and move forward with it. So, but I do think we need to just be careful about the language that gets used, because to Sunny's point. You know, you don't, you, you don't wanna seem that you're taking a viewpoint one way or the other, you're being inclusive, and inclusive means. You know, I may not agree with you, but here you are, so, you know, here we are. I, I just think we need to be careful about that with the language, and I agree with Peter, if we're putting something out, it's gotta be approved. Um, because that's the, you know, it, it, especially at this, well, always, but especially at this tender time.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your comments. Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead, Dana, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, in our, in our growth as a commission, and with the future of maybe becoming a permanent commission. This seems more like a conversation that needs to be elevated into a separate space of. What is our mission, what are our bylaws, do they need to be revisited? What is our definition of sustainable? Is it environmental, is it financial, is it something else altogether, is it all of those combined? And possibly something that in the future we should look for, like to having a subcommittee to kind of review those aspects and really solidify what the commission is going to be moving forward.
Yes, excellent point. Thank you.
Yes, Gabriela. Just to be clear, all of the language that I used was from things that are attached to the commission already. It's from the description on the municipal website about explaining what sustainable Bethel Commission is and does and where we're all, you know, identified as public in public space that we're on the commission. That's all of those words and things that we used for the certification process, the walk audit process, like all of, all of the things that we have already done as a commission. That's where all this language came from. I just put it in a piece of paper with images and, and some bullet points. So, again, it's from what we have already done. It is the current mission that the commission has. Whether, like, I totally agree with Dana that they need to be reviewed and solidified and our bylaws need to be, you know, out of draft form and voted on as well. So I guess the conversation can continue then. But you are all more than welcome to use it or not use it. It is certainly not something that I expected to have to defend or explain because it is, it is all aligned with what the commission has been doing thus far. And regardless of what the political wings of people may be at the time, like Sunny said, this is what we've been working on and we should commit to it regardless.
I look forward to reading it.
Okay, I sent it to you again.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I think we should all reread the mission statement.
Okay. It's online, yes.
It's on the drive.
Yeah.
I'll read it now.
All right, so we're gonna move on, okay? So solar education, Sunny. Do you want to say something and then I can pipe in later?
No, I mean, you're as up to date as I am, so you can go ahead, Catherine.
Okay, okay, so we put a pause on it for now and Sunny and I will regroup and put a, we're gonna put a different, a different, just a program together. There's been other things going on, but we will continue the conversation. It'll be an extension of what we already did last fall, so that's where it's at. Any comments on that? The walk on it? Gabriela, did you want to say anything about that? No? Okay, what, the reason I put that on there is because Gabriela and I received an email from the First Selectment that the walk audit grant that we're hoping to get, or we did get, is, there's a little bit of delay at the state, which is typical of state governments, but it is advancing and moving forward. So that, I put the earth day-
Do you have a timeline on that? Like, what is the-
No, 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 don't have a timeline. It's right now, that's the only information I have. Right now is what the First Selectment said.
Okay.
Krista, I keep asking for updates every so often. I don't know if it's worth discussing at a different meeting, if we'd want to do something else or more as a commission to try to help it along in some way.
Well, I just think, once it goes to, once it goes to the state and they're approving the grant, it's kind of up to them as to when they release the money so that you can move forward.
They move very slowly at the state.
Yeah, I'll keep up for updates every so often.
Do they, do they have someone in mind for who they're going to hire to do the, do the work that the grant is?
Right now, I think what, what the, what they're doing is to hire someone to evaluate. But I don't think they have someone in mind that needs to go through the approval process.
Okay. Who, who might that be that would-
I don't know.
Pick something like that up?
I don't know.
Okay.
Some sort of engineering firm, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it would definitely be an engineering firm, for sure. This is a design engineering project.
The vault, the vault engineering.
Design and planning grant.
Okay.
Yep. But it's moving, it's just moving slowly.
Snail's pace. They'll all have reflexes like Tia's cat.
True that, true that.
So I put Earth Day recap on there because I wanted to hear any of your comments about that. Give me anything, you mentioned something to me that we need to really look for.
So for, to recap the event, it was a great success. We sadly had to go inside, but preparing and planning in advance definitely helped because the layout worked out. We had people in the hallway, in the gym, as well as the general purpose room. And one of the feedbacks I received from the vendors is that the music, again this year, was too loud. And it made it difficult for conversation, specifically in the general purpose room. So keeping that in mind for next year.
Yeah, can you order it not to rain?
Right. But that being said, we had thirty, we had, I think, twenty-seven or thirty, I remember right now. Vendors show up and set up tables. It was, we had solar companies, different, different solar companies. We had New Haven Farm, Bethel Land Trust, Parks and Recs, Friends of Parks and Recs,
Garden Club,
Master Gardeners. Master Gardeners, the Tarian Church.
Firefighters and police and-
The bike, the bike police officer was there.
They looked like they were having fun in the gymnasium, like the kids and the little games and stuff like that. It looked like they were having a lot of fun.
Go Net Speed sponsored the face painter, which was also a really big hit, yeah. The, the painting and the obstacle course were, you know, great for the kids. And then somebody was selling a book. There was a lot of different vendors.
Yeah. I- As the, as the garden club, you know, we were there, we had a table. And, and we had actually really, for the day, you know, because it rained and we had to move inside, we had reasonable traffic. And we got a couple of really nice leads on donations for our plant sale. And, and it was very worthwhile for us as the Bethel Garden Club.
Great, I'm happy to hear that. There was definitely a lot of older people that came through, a lot of young families that came through. I think something to think about next year, how do we get that middle ground demographic? Just so people participate and how to expand it and grow it to sustainable businesses, programs, initiatives that are around town and beyond. There was a couple of people from out of Bethel, so that was exciting. And yeah, I have put forth the application for next year's Earth Day. It will be Saturday, the twenty-fifth of April, so it'll be the, like this year, the Saturday after. I think it helps that people realize it's Earth Day and then they're looking to do something, so to have it the weekend after. You catch all the people that sort of forgot about it and then remembered. I've also put in a request for the mobile activity with Energize CT. So it's basically like an interactive exhibit for people and children to like ride bikes and generate energy and discuss energy in Connecticut. I haven't heard back, but hopefully they will want to come and, or be able to pump our events slightly smaller. So, you know, who knows what they'll decide. And for sure, we're gonna need people to help make it all happen beforehand and during. So please get ready to start helping out with that at some point.
So that's a pretty segue because you had mentioned that to me at the event. Yeah, so this is, this is really great and I commend, again, Katie who started this, but Gabriela picked up the slack and did a fantastic job. And it was really successful despite the fact that it rained. Inside, it was great and we had a food truck. Yeah, we did have a food truck and the food was actually really good. And then you coughed when I said that.
No, no.
And it worked out very well being inside, quite frankly. Not, not that it should be. But my point is that when we started this several years ago, it was, we were just renewing it. And it's grown, the town is growing, so, and people are aware of it and expect it now. So it's, that's really, that's a great place to be. It really is. It's an awesome place to be. But it's a lot. It's an amazing amount of planning, coordinating, and following up. And you did a great job, Gabriela. Thank you very much. And so, we don't, we're not gonna solve the world's problems right this second, but there's a discussion that needs to be had and it's not just like this commission. There needs to be some type of partnership, and I am not sure who, I don't even want to, off the top of my head, with another group that can help the planning component and all the other things that have to go into it. We can lead it if that's possible, but I think it's a lot for one person, right?
That is what happened this year as well because, you know, Parks and Recs Department definitely planned the Tres de Palooza along with Davey from Bethel Land Trust. And that, that event, Tres de Palooza itself was two days because the rain on Saturday, we opened it to two days. So plenty of people showed up Saturday and Sunday. So there is collaboration. I, I, there's so much that is on the front end of it, reaching out to vendors constantly, all that stuff.
That's the coordination.
That's the coordination part that, there, there needs to be additional people that aren't also-
Right, so think about it and we can talk about that, okay? Because that, and we're early on because it's just happened a month ago, but it definitely needs to kind of pull all that together. I think it was a fantastic event, it really was.
Yeah, special thanks to Parks and Recs and Bethel Land Trust.
Okay, so Pollinator Pathway, the collaborations, I bring that up because Krista and Dana, you have both talked about that in different ways. So I'm not sure if there's a conversation here, but we've talked about this in the past. There's different groups that do the pollinator pathways and, you know, if there's a way to continue that effort in different ways and support it, connect it, educate the, educate people, et cetera, et cetera. I'm leaving you guys, quite frankly.
I did go on the Pollinator Pathway, the website, you know, nationwide website. And they do have a map, but you have to take your pollinator garden and you have to register it on the map. And they, if it's, it could be a residence, but it could also be a municipality and, or a town spot. And I think that maybe what we need to do is start inventorying and adding those gardens to the, the national website. And it's just an easy thing, like you, you say you want to add something and you type in where it is and kind of a little bit about what plant material is contained within it. And some of them were very detailed and some of them were, you know, just, we have cone flowers and jopeye weed and this and that. And they were, you know, very brief. So I think maybe I'd be willing to generate a list of what the garden club has that could be considered a pollinator pathway. And so then we can put a whole bunch of little points in Bethel. Now there's only two.
Yeah, because I think BLT does, doesn't BLT just not particularly pollinate or- But I think the schools do some, but anyway, I'm not sure all, how all this works, quite frankly. I just think it's a really good thing for the town. And the, the other part of this is communicating to the public that, where they are, like you have suggested. And also, that would kind of segue into the conversation we've had about the third space of Parloa Park, if that happens, to do some type of pollinator pathway as a third space, once those, that infrastructure improvements is complete.
So Kath, Kath, we do have a pollinator garden. The garden club has a butterfly garden at Parloa Park currently. And, and the place where you were speaking about to put the third space is filled with the invasive knotweed.
So, right, so Krista, so I'm not, I'm not turning, it's just getting late. Yes, I know. You and I had had this, have had lots of these conversations. Right now, I think that the key is what you just said, is to put those little dots on and, and then the next step is to educate the public that that exists. Then I only bring up the third space as a potential, it doesn't necessarily have to be at, at Parloa, but I think it's the whole concept of third space is a good concept. That's the only reason I bring it up. So that's good. Thank you. Anything else you have about this? I'll just find that the other way. Okay, all right, Wes Khan, how's your projects going there?
We are waiting for a lead. It's, we haven't heard from anyone or anything. I meant to reach out to Michelle, but I forgot, so I will do that in the next coming days. So hopefully, somebody reaches out. We met not too long ago, Krista, Dana and I, to talk about what, how we're gonna move forward, how we're gonna manage this and how it's all gonna work. And it led us to the discussion of a potential subcommittee structure that would, that would have subcommittees where different initiatives that we are working on, whether solar, the internship or pollinator pathways, EVs, so that these initiatives live on beyond one particular commissioner. So we talked about what it would mean to have a formation subcommittee so that the type of work that conservation requires would be housed under that. And then we could discuss and vote or whatever we need to do. We started thinking about it because I, I remember Tia with the subcommittee for-
The planning of the certification.
Yeah, the certification process, to keeping that transparent and documented as much as possible. So we want to be able to be documented and transparent as much as possible so anybody in the community can join the efforts and not necessarily take up the space of the discussion time here. So Krista and Dana, do you want to add anything about that?
So if we're, that was always the goal, you were there and Sunny was there at the beginning while we, the three of us were appointed by Matt Knickerbocker. We had a committee structure and then things changed.
Do we have that outlined still or is it something we should formulate about?
You, it's, this has been- It's truly ad hoc. So we did have a committee structure because we had ten people on the commission. We had ten people for several months and things changed after Matt, anyway, I'm not into that whole thing. But yeah, and each commissioner at the time, because we were brand new, it was like a blank slate and putting a, 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 a structure in place. Each commissioner was responsible for certain things, like you were talking about. And that worked well for a little while until things changed. So yes, that was the original plan. We worked on that and it was going well. So I'm all in with that. I'm, I'm in on structure.
You go around transportation.
Boom, 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 boom. And it was working very well. So I'm all in with that. Not my first rodeo as far as a commission or a committee or anything like that. I like the structure. I like the structure, but again, since things change and we were really, we really had to get that certification. That's sort of what we were focused on. But now that we're moving into a more formal structured format, especially if hopefully we become a permanent commissioner of the turn, this will become critically important.
If we put together a potential subcommittee structure, is that something we could discuss maybe next meeting or a future meeting?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. And we, but again, we, we're, we're gonna be, we're down one commissioner and you know, so yes, absolutely. You can do that. You can send that to me and we can start talking about it.
I, I think it goes to the point that Gabriella said that um, say, like just for example, managing the internship and you know, getting them all of the information and putting them in contact with the land trust and with the, and with the people in town that they need to speak with to the GIS mapping and all, you know, like that sort of would take up so much of this meeting's time to work through all of that sort of thing. That a subcommittee would be able to uh do that and then to um, report back and, and.
Correct.
You know, on progress and et cetera.
Yep, that's the way it was structured before.
Okay, great.
But one of the commissioners will have to be the lead of each of those subcommittees. There will have to be someone that leads that many committees. That's how that works. And then whoever the lead is, you can bring in volunteers, you know, it doesn't, they don't necessarily have to be appointed. You can bring other people in to help with that effort. And then at each of the commission meetings, you report out, you know. And so what we have now isn't truly ad hoc, but it's, it's, that's why it's under commissioner reports. And it can be structured, however, it makes sense to the commission right now. But yeah, I, I think that's a great idea and we definitely should do that because that then will solidify and struct, the structure of this commission in a, in a, in a better way to me. So can we?
I, I agree. Yeah. So I mean, just to add to what everyone's saying and also to Peter's earlier point. Um, yeah, this would also, rather than all of us focusing on a few things. Um, and again, I, Peter, I hear what, what you said earlier. To bring that balance of can we do both tangible things and also more of the intangible? And you know, which are just as important things. And we can, if we can divide and conquer that way, uh, Peter Ford one has been trying for the longest time to get EVs into the uh town. Um, and, and it would be great to actually see things like that being taken forward to completion. And so if, if, I think a structure like that will find that balance where we can focus and, and, and move forward. And, and that way again, um, Peter, to your point earlier, it shouldn't look like this commission um, has only intangibles in its pocket. Um, but if we can take, you know, some of these more substantial, bigger projects like the solar farm, like the EV idea that you had. I think that this structure will allow us to uh doing that.
Whether they come to fruition or not, just having the projects to focus on and bring to the public's attention that that's what we're working on now.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
Great. Tia, do you have anything on this?
Oops, sorry. Um, no, I think that makes sense.
Okay. So can we put it to a vote for next meeting or? I don't know. You can send something. We can go for it and see what all goes.
We're on the agenda.
We're on the agenda, see.
Okay, so we'll go on the agenda.
Well, I, do we need, do we need some type of um, I think you need augmentation that says what the commission, like what that subcommittee is responsible for.
It's an idea. Can we do it by emails before next month so that we have it all ready to go?
So, yeah.
Yeah. So wait, wait, so huge chance on this. Um, Robert's Rules of Order, because we can't discuss things on emails. And that's considered a quorum and we have to notify the public that we have a meeting and we're talking about something. So no, no, and no. Readout. Yeah. Okay, so for next. I think what we can do is, if, if.
You can circulate.
You can circulate it and then, I mean.
Just go back and forth.
We just can't have it as a full commission back and forth.
Right, so.
So if Dana sends out, this is what I proposed for subcommittees, let's discuss it next month.
I think we need to discuss things first instead of just go for.
Okay.
So vote, you know.
Can I clarify what Peter's saying? Are you talking about like a multiple subcommittee structures being fleshed out? And then naming the subcommittees?
Just, just.
I don't know.
Put a proposal together and then we can talk about it.
Oh, you know, I'm trying to figure out what I'm proposing, so.
I think at this point, it's, it's energy, it's transportation, it's.
I would say conservation, energy, transportation, housing, maybe a final.
Five or six.
Well, yeah, five or six. I think that's good. Put together the categories. You know, and, and, and you kind of align it with the things that we've been talking about for the last two years. You know what I'm saying? Yep.
And since it's the old structure.
It's the old structure, exactly. So it's exactly what we did before.
We need more discussion on the, the structure as a whole. However, like certain things like this internship are, already fall pretty well under like a specific subcommittee. Could we like put that specific subcommittee to a vote next meeting?
I think, I think we need to discuss the whole thing, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna piece, it work, I think this is a great idea because we already did this and I think this is the way to go. We need to do it as a whole, not just piecemeal it together. You know what I'm saying? Not that that could change over time because stuff changes, you know? But as long as we have something that we can work from and a benchmark and a guide, I think it's great.
Okay, so.
Makes sense?
Yes, but I think it starts implying that the bylaws need to, do you know what I mean? It's like a, it's a.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's definitely expansive, but we need to start somewhere. Right now, we're not, we're just talking.
Well, they just start with one subcommittee.
I mean, but let's do, if you guys have something in mind, that's great. Put it, put it in writing and let's talk about it next month. We'll put it on the agenda and discussion.
It's good. It'll be at six o'clock, so we have extra.
There you go. Hey, uh, can I make a quick? Can I, can I make a quick interim?
Tia, please.
Can I make a quick interim?
Absolutely.
Since we don't have a subcommittee structure, why don't we just appoint the two people to work on this project rather like you did before for the Earth Day, right? And then we did the same thing for the walk audit. Just do that for the moment. And I like the idea of, of looking at something more formally because I don't know that we've ever really finished our bylaws. But you could have the two people, because is, isn't it Krista and Gabriella who are working on this? Right, so, so do that because you've got, uh, just for the moment, because you wanna continue your work, you wanna walk forward. And we don't, but, so we don't wanna inconvenience that work, but we do need to have more of a structural component to the, uh, to the commission. Now, some of that, when, when are they looking to vote on the charter?
Uh, November. They hope.
So, so you know, maybe we can do some work with the, with the idea that we are going to become permanent. That you, you know, uh, I, I'm, I'm going to be optimistic that we are. But, but you know, you don't wanna go through so much work that if it doesn't, you know, you, we've expanded a lot of good time on something that will come fruition as opposed to progressing work that we can do in the interim. With whether we're permanent or not permanent, doesn't matter. This is the work we have before us now. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's what I was trying to differentiate for people.
Yeah. Now, is it my understanding that there are no defined bylaws, that they're still in edit?
There, there were, there were bylaws that when we first were appointed that we, once again, Katie, actually we drafted it, we put it together. I, we did circulate it. There were ten of us at that point. Um, there was a vote on it actually. And that was submitted to, we sent it to, it was to Matt and then to Dan. And because that then would have to go to the Board of Slapman and it, I don't, it, right now, there's nowhere. So um.
Because I think if we're going to, if we're gonna become a permanent um, commission, we need to have bylaws that are like intact.
Yes, we are aware. Yep.
Yeah, we do, Krista, but, but the thing, the thing that I'm concerned about is spending all of our time doing that now. Um, and, and impeding any other work that we have going forward. Cause if, if, if we don't wind up being a permanent board, um, that's a lot of time that, that got spent on that.
Uh, I'm not saying to exclusively, you know, spend our time on that. But if they have already been reviewed and approved by the members of the commission at that point, why can't you just like revive that to say, look, can, can Dan approve of these bylaws? You know, and then the subcommittee.
I think you may wanna, I think you may wanna look at the bylaws before that, before that though, Krista, because I've seen them and they need a lot of work. They're not, they're, they're very loosey goosey. Um, it's, it, and, and because it was in a very evolutionary state and it was a very different kind of organization at that time. So I don't know that it would benefit, some of the aspects of it would not necessarily benefit us for the kind of things that we're looking to do now. I, I agree with you. We need to have something more, more rigid. But, but I think we, this new group may need to look at that before we send it on to anyone else. Cause it's, it's got a lot of holes in it and it's got a lot of part pieces that are missing. So I, I don't disagree with you. It's just, I think where we are in that process might be a, a little different. Would you agree, Catherine? Cause that was a very different time.
And what I was, I guess, well, I'll talk in a second, Dana.
I just wanna provide a counterpoint to you, Tia, that I think it's important that we put the time in upfront before we become a full commission, a permanent commission, as a way of advocating for ourselves that we should and can be a full commission. We can operate in that capacity. I think it's important that we show, like as one of those tangible things, like we can do this and we have the capacity to be a permanent mission.
Have you ever created bylaws for an organization before?
Yes.
Good. Then, then you know the amount of work that goes on. And, and the issue that I have is that we have a number of things before us right now that we're working our way through. I think i- if, as part of the process, we need to really look at what's there now and, and maybe work from that as opposed to sending it on to anybody to approve. Cause uh frankly, I don't think we could.
I think we should have a separate race committee dedicated to editing and reviewing the bylaws in the mission.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't disagree. I just think the time in the committee, in the board meeting should not be just dedicated to that. That was my point, was that this would be something that, that could not, we may need to have proposals before that. You need to have a group perhaps working on that, but, but we need to not spend our time in our board meetings doing, doing that.
Can I, let me just, in Robert's rules, in Robert's rules, the bylaws are presented to the members and then there is a month's time that goes past. And then they are voted on. So you know, if we can come up with a version of the bylaws that then can be presented to the membership or the commissioners. And then there can be a discussion, amendments, this and that. So that's like one discussion about points within the bylaws. Then those revisions are done. So it's really, you know, once you present them, it's a couple of months of, of process. But it shouldn't be a, it shouldn't prevent us from doing it.
No, it shouldn't. So let me circle back. Let me circle back to the original conversation. You, this subcommittee of, I guess the two of you, right? To put together a proposal related to the categories, the subcommittees, is that?
So well, the original question was a conservation subcommittee to house the internship program and any other, like Pollinator Pathways would be.
But you have to put together a proposal for discussion for next month. That's, that's, that's what I'm circling back at.
Right, but I'm clarifying that our discussion was based on a conservation subcommittee. The larger discussion that became the full structure of subcommittees for the entire commission.
Right, so I, I think we should have that discussion now because Dana's, when I agree with everything that all of you are saying. Um, yeah, let's start, let's do that and show that this is what we're doing. We're restructuring this and, and tightening up the structure. So, so I just wanna circle back because all of this is important. There can be a subcommittee for bylaws and whatever that means, because we're not gonna solve the world's problems right this second. But the idea of having that proposal is really important and I think we can discuss it next month.
For next month, you'd like us to have the whole structure or just the?
I think the whole structure makes sense. Let's do it all. I mean, let's just do, yeah. But again, if we're gonna piecemeal this, it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, let's talk about it and then maybe, I don't know what's gonna happen next month. We'll see what, what, what we talk about. Maybe it's like, okay, well, we, you know, whatever the conversation is, we can just pare it down or whatever we're gonna do. But let's start somewhere, because right now where there's nothing. There was something, but now there's nothing. Okay? Does that make sense to everybody?
Is the subcommittee structure what existed before? Is that also in the drive? Because I only found the bylaws.
Um, no, it's in, it, I think it's in minutes. It's like you, you'd have to go back to the initial minutes that we had put together these different subcommittees. And each commissioner was responsible for one of those. And at the time, when we were first created, it was related to the certification with the Sustainable Connecticut. So each of, so it was a subcommittee for each of those categories, which was a lot. It was twelve. Do you remember around what date that?
Well, when were we? Uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-three, our appointment date. Twenty twenty-two for me.
Two, for me. Oh, oh, for me. And you were like, I mean, you just kinda, you and Sunny just kinda came over.
We go back.
A million years.
I mean, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, it, it was.
I think you're twenty seventeen, yeah.
Yeah, that was largely a discussion. All right, well, we'll just, but you know, come up with something. I mean, it, right now it's up for discussion. I think it's a great idea. Okay. Anything else? We covered a lot. You guys are awesome. Um, anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Yay. So moved. Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.